Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, and welcome to the Southeast Delco's School Board of Directors Board Business Meeting, scheduled for Thursday, November twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. We'll have a salute to the flag and a roll call by Mr. Butler.
He texted me.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, and welcome to the Southeast Delco's School Board of Directors Board Business Meeting, scheduled for Thursday, November twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. We'll have a salute to the flag and a roll call by Mr. Butler.
Mr. Lafferty. Ms. Harris Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Monora Witset.
Present.
Dr. Sanchez.
Present.
Mr. DiOrio.
Present.
And Mr. Butler, present. In addition, we have Ms. Barley.
Present.
And Ms. Knight.
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. There are no comments at this time from the board president. Can I have the student board representative report at this time, please?
Good evening, everyone. We're excited to share updates on the fantastic events and accomplishments happening across the district. Let's start with the kindergarten center. At the kindergarten center, students have been learning about the virtue of kindness this month. Teachers have been sharing books and videos to highlight its importance in daily interactions with classmates and adults. To kick things off, a kindness assembly was held where students learned about the power of being kind and the positive impact it has on their community.
Over at Darby Township School, they've had an eventful month. Their haunted hallway event was a huge success with a great turnout from families and students. A special shout out goes to the Academy Park National Art Society for their support in making the evening so memorable. Darby Township also held a PBIS Bingo Initiative on November eighth to recognize students with perfect attendance and zero office referrals. Looking ahead, they're gearing up for their first annual Turkey Bowl, where staff will face off against eighth grader students in spirited competition.
At Harris School, families recently enjoyed a PBIS Fall Family Night on November seventh. The student council has also been busy selling gobble grams throughout November, fostering school spirit and connection. On November nineteenth, students who purchased tickets with their night notes attended a wacky waffle celebration and created waffle sundaes. Harris is also preparing for parent-teacher conferences on November twenty fifth and twenty sixth.
Students are celebrating Thankful Spirit Week with themed days, including Lumberjack Day, Foodie Tuesday, and Football Friday. November will close with an ice cream sundae reward for students who had no referrals this month, followed by Fall Parent Conferences on the twenty fifth and twenty sixth.
Delcroft School celebrated World Kindness Gratitude Day on November thirteenth. Students participated in various activities, including creating a kindness chain with messages of kindness. The chain now decorates the cafeteria as a beautiful reminder of the power of compassion. Delcroft also opened its Scholastic Book Fair on November eighteenth, running through November twenty sixth, thanks to the hard work of Ms. Thompson, the school librarian.
Finally, at Academy Park High School, students are diving into creative projects and celebrations. The fall play masterclass is well underway with performances scheduled for December thirteenth and fourteenth. A student-led costume crew has been working hard to design and manage the costumes for the production. In addition, Academy Park hosted its first-ever Keystone Award Ceremony, recognizing one hundred and sixty-eight students for scoring proficient or advanced on their spring twenty-four Keystone Exams. The school also continues its park pride initiatives, including the upcoming Funds Giving Celebration on November twenty seventh, featuring a pancake breakfast and fun activities for students to maintain excellent behavior.
District-wide students are thrilled about the announcement of our spring musical, Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. Auditions will take place on January fourth, and students from fifth grade and up are encouraged to participate. We're looking forward to the creativity and collaboration this production will bring.
We're proud of the hardworking enthusiasm demonstrated by students, staff, and families across the district. Thank you for all your continued support in making our school a vibrant and engaging community.
Wishing everyone a joyful and reflective American Education Week. Let's celebrate the power of education and its ability to transform lives. And with that, that concludes our board report. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. As always, you can stay for the whole meeting, or you can excuse yourselves.
We'd like to stay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Sanchez, do you have a superintendent's report?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I don't have a long report today because we do have a great presentation, and I don't want us to delay too much longer. I do just want to ask and invite everyone that's here to help do some outreach. We are going to be doing a job fair. We're looking to be able to hire especially substitute teachers. So there'll be a job fair, Darby Township Ironic, that you're presenting today. It's going to be held at the Darby Township School on Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, from four to six P. M. So if you follow us on social media, feel free to share so we can have a deeper reach of potential applicants for the position. And that concludes my report. Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Sanchez. At this time, we're going to have the Darby Township administrators come forth.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Darby Township Nightly News, where we bring you the latest on how our school is making strides towards greatness. We have exciting updates, and we're starting with some fantastic news about attendance. Over the past two years, DTS attendance has been rising steadily. Let's go live with Mrs. Wenner in the field to tell us more about this achievement.
That's right. Our attendance is up by over three percent for each of the last two years, bringing us to a solid ninety-three percent this year. Our goal for this year is ninety-five percent, and we're encouraging everyone to get us there. Remember, coming to school every day sets students up for success.
Thanks, Mrs. Wenner. With this commitment, we're confident we'll meet our goal. Next up, let's check out what DTS is doing to maintain a positive learning environment. Suspension rates are down, discipline is improving, and teachers are noticing a positive shift in student behavior. Here's Mrs. Christman, live with more on this great news.
Thank you, Mr. Osterberry. Last year, we saw a twenty-five percent reduction in suspensions, and this year, we're down another twenty percent. DTS is making an impact by setting clear expectations and using PBIS to reinforce positive behavior. Our goal this year is to drop suspensions by another five percent. Back to you.
Now, let's talk about incentives. Our school store and bi-weekly rewards program have been making a big difference in motivating students. Reporting live is Mrs. Goodwin with details.
Thanks, John. At our school store, students can earn and use night notes for a variety of rewards. These bi-weekly incentives are part of our PBIS strategy, and we're seeing students working hard to earn their rewards.
It's fun to collect your night notes and show in the store. It makes school more exciting.
Earn your night notes.
Back to you, John.
Let's hear about the Hot Class Program and our morning meetings where students learn valuable skills.
The Hot Class Program rewards classes with perfect attendance and punctuality. Every two weeks, one class is selected as the winner. We're also using morning meetings to review behavior expectations and deliver PBIS lessons. Now introducing DJ Sorry Miss Jackson.
We're the ones who's hot today. Hot stands for here on time. Get up. Stand up. Where you are. All right. Look at the board. The ball is here.
It's getting hot in here because we are here on time. I'm getting so hot. I'm going to get some doughnuts. Getting hot in here because we are here on time. I'm going to get some doughnuts.
And remember, students, hot stands for here on time.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. With these initiatives, students are learning important life skills. Finally, let's hear about our exciting new partnership with DCIU.
Thanks, John. DTS is partnering with DCIU on a three-year grant, training staff on redundant faculty stress. This integration with PBIS helps to build a welcoming and positive climate.
Together with the DCIU, DTS is setting the stage for future success and building a culture of pride and respect. With all of this, we've been able to do a lot of different things. Our scores have gone up. We have seen some major successes in our math and our literacy scores. We will continue to grow. That is something that we put our mindset on, and I am completely proud of the program that we've got set up over at Darby Township.
Thank you for tuning in to DTS Nightly News. We're proud of all that DTS has achieved, and with the support of our incredible staff, students, families, and all of you here tonight, we can't wait for more on the horizon.
Thank you, everybody.
I would like to thank DTS for this amazing presentation tonight and enthusiasm. So if the enthusiasm is like this for the students, I can imagine what your hallways look like. Thank you again, guys. Now, at this time, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to accept the regular board business meeting from October? Treasurer's Report and Bill's for the payment in the amount of ten million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-seven cents.
I shall move.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There are no old or unfinished business at this time. New business. Are there any comments or questions on new business? Item A, Education, items one through ten. Are there any comments or questions on new business? B, Finance, items one through six.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think my microphone is working, but I think we needed a clarification on finance item number three.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca, for that. Item number three indicates that four board directors will be attending the Advocacy and Equity Institute in Washington on February second through fifth. Those four board members are three board members plus Dr. Sanchez as a fourth board member. He's a non-voting member of the board, legally speaking. So I just wanted to clarify that those four board members would include three directors plus Dr. Sanchez. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. DiOrio. Are there any comments and questions on new business? Item C, H R one through twenty-two. Seeing none. Are there any comments or questions on new business? Item D, Policy One.
Madam President, I just have one comment. Can anyone hear me? Because I don't think-
We can all hear you.
So just so the public and everyone at the table understands, the word region is the language used by Pennsylvania's school code. So for the sake of this motion on the agenda, region will mean municipality. So it could be a borough or a township that's in part of the district.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Dr. Sanchez, are there any comments concerning agenda items?
Madam President, yes, there are. Madam President, yes, there are. Like to invite Patrick McGowan to the microphone, please.
You have three minutes to speak. All you need to state is your first and last name. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick McGowan. In reference to agenda item, policy number, or policy D, number one. So I wasn't here last week for the committee of the whole meeting, so I did watch it online. And there are two items I just want to bring up. One, I am a big proponent of the adversary system, where people discuss ideas, debate each other, but do so in a respectful manner. From what I witnessed last week on the online recording, it was not respectful. The president was cut off numerous times trying to gain order, and I feel as a community, we're supposed to represent and model for our children. And I could tell you, Dr. Sanchez said it before when he was interviewing. He looked at all the videos going back of the board meetings, and I'm sure any person coming to interview with the district will do their due diligence and watch board meetings to get a lay of the land. So that's number one about that. But in terms of the policy for representation for, by municipality as opposed to an at-large, I am definitely in favor of this. It's not to say that the representatives on this board aren't here for every child in this community, but I do believe that all of our four communities, there should be equitable representation on the board. Right now, there are five members all representing one local municipality. To me, that's not equitable. When you're looking at a situation going, we have four community schools, so that community should have a voice at the table. What is being hap- what happens at Sharon Hill Community may not be very relevant to what's happening in Folcroft Community. So there should be a voice on this board for Folcroft Community or Sharon Hill Community. It is not to say that we're trying to take a voice away from anybody, but it is more equitable. That is all I would like to say. But I also go back to the way, the manner which the board behaved last week while discussing this was very unacceptable. If you're supposed to model for our community, that was not an appropriate model. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGowan. Like to invite now Stephen Zane to the microphone.
Good evening. Good evening, board members and superintendent and others on the board or others at the table. My name is Steve Zane. I'm a councilman in Collingdale. I have had three kids go through Harris School and all graduating from here at A. P. I would like to comment on the vote tonight about having equal representation from the boroughs on the board. Populations in the local boroughs are ninety-one hundred in Darby Township, eighty-eight hundred in Collingdale, sixty-seven hundred in Folcroft, and six thousand for Sharon Hill. Again, they're rough numbers. I support the change to how many members are elected to the board. And in the meeting the other night, it was talked about having two from each town. I feel it will actually bring more people to run for those positions and that, as they will have a better chance of winning based on the voter numbers in each town. I also feel the change is a good thing, as I know as a parent or any parent really wants their children to get a great education. However, there may be some concerns that as a parent in Collingdale might have compared to parents in Folcroft or the other boroughs. And by having equal representation, each town will have a say in how things go. I know all this time that all the members support all the parents and children from the whole district. However, having members from each borough will allow them to put more support for their schools in their town with also supporting the whole district. I understand that this way is done in many other school districts, and it works well. I hope the rest of the board sees this as a good change and will help our students become great adults. I also have spoken with other community leaders in our boroughs, and they agree as well that there should be some type of change to the amounts from each town. So I hope the board approves this agenda items tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Like to invite Maria Jenkins.
Good evening, all. Maria Jenkins.
Hi. Hello. So it's been a while that I've been to the meetings, but I did get a chance to watch last week's meeting. I think I've brought this concern up before when we had a meeting here at the school. Watching it was very bothersome. And again, as I stated before, we are a reflection of what we want our children to model, as another parent just stood up here and said. So when y'all in y'all meetings behind closed doors, that's the time for y'all to battle and fight. When y'all out here representing, what everyone will see, y'all gotta keep it together some way, somehow, because I'm telling you, the children are students. They watching y'all and making a mockery of this. They sending them videos to each other. It's not okay. We have to do better. We're all human, but this is something we have to work on. Fight y'all battles behind closed doors. We shouldn't have to see it, and our children, most importantly, shouldn't have to see it. As a school board, you guys ensure that the concerns of all of the community and all of the diversity perspectives throughout our regions, townships are discussed. Again, not to say that anyone is not representing what they stand for, but because as a school board, the responsibility is more so to ensure that the school districts are responsive to all values, beliefs, and priorities throughout the community, we gotta open it up a little more. Multiple people, okay, too, but that should be the max, and we need more inclusion with representation throughout our community. So I really appreciate that this has made the agenda, but I hope that this plan is approved and put in place so that that can happen. Thank you again for all you guys have been doing. I have been MIA for a little bit, but please work on our representation to the community on top of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sean Murphy?
Hello, Sean Murphy. I'll keep this short because everyone is saying the same thing. Equal representation across the board makes life a lot easier for everyone. What I haven't, I didn't watch last week's meeting, so I have no idea what happened, but with having the same, having two people from each borough, township, municipality, it makes it equal, which is what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Bianca Seldo? I'm sorry. Bianca Seldo.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. My name is Bianca Seldo, and I'm also here for equal representation. I believe that's very important. I actually have a friend that is from Folcroft that didn't, she wasn't even aware of what was going on. So watching the video and sharing it was an eye-wakening for everyone. And she's a parent that actually sends her skit, her kids to, up at Darby Township, to a private school. So if there was more positive going around the townships and being equally represented, I think the money wouldn't be invested in other townships for looking for a better education for our children. I think it's very important to be equally represented and bringing- And bringing ideas together is gonna make a bigger unity for everyone. And also, I believe as it's always been this way, it's not. Like, we need to change that. We need to respect each other. That comment just made it seem like we need to keep our mouths quiet, just to please and hear what we want to hear. I think if we have an open ear and open mind, there's more things that can be done, especially for our kids. I don't want to spend money in another township when I can invest and stay where I'm at as a parent. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Small.
Hi, everyone. My name's Lisa Small. I'm a Collingdale resident, born and raised here, spent time at this school, mostly at Collingdale High School. My daughter went to public school here, went for a year. I also agree that each borough, township should be represented equally. And I don't understand why anybody on this school board would think otherwise. It doesn't even make sense. So I hope and I pray that each one of you will really think about it and give it a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Kertoff? Sheri Kertoff?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sheri Kertoff. I agree with what everyone has been saying, that we do need equal representation. I did watch the school board meeting online, and I agree with Michelle. Michelle was saying how, "We're all here for the kids, but we do need to have someone to go to." Because what if there is someone that wants to actually run, and they don't know what the process is? If there's equal representation in each township, maybe then they would get to learn more about it and decide if it's something they want to do. I also agree with Pat. It was kind of embarrassing last week to watch that. It is showing the kids what it's like, like what we have to, like, give each, each, each person on the board time to talk and not cut people off, because then when people do watch that, then they would not want to be on the board because of the way it's portrayed. And this does get put on YouTube, I'm sure. So if we can try and, you know, listen to each other and wait for each other to speak, it would just look better for the kids and for the people that are watching it that aren't from around here. So please, if everyone would vote yes, I do agree with everyone having the equality for the boroughs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. May I have a vote? Sorry.
I am so sorry, Ms. Raquel Holman, please, if you can come on up.
Okay, so Raquel Holman. Several comments as I'm listening here. Ideally, in a perfect world, yup, equal representation. Everybody can run from any municipality at any given time. Everyone, everyone has always been able to run. Getting candidates is like pulling teeth. How do I know? Because I pulled candidates from Collingdale. Literally begged her to run to get on the board, previous board member. It's challenging. That's number one. Number two, equality. We keep talking about this word equality. Darby Township has a school that used to be a middle school. We don't have, and when I say "we," meaning over here on wards one and two, there is no equality. There is, we have nothing. We don't have a school, we don't have a library, we don't have a recreation center. We have nothing. There's no equality, not in, not in those terms. Previous school boards, we had, I'mma give us, if I can think correctly, remember, we might have representation by one person. One, literally, the school board was, race-wise, literally, it was all white men, maybe there was a woman. We had zero representation. Nobody cared that the district was fifty-fifty. No one cared, no one ever cared. And it just seems kinda interesting, not saying that everyone shouldn't be represented. Absolutely, absolutely. We all get out here and vote. It's all of a sudden, people that never, and I guess, for me, for me, people that have never been engaged, all of a sudden, on this topic, now everyone's engaged. Anybody can run at any given time. You can go to the Republican Committee, you can go to the Democratic Committee, you can go anywhere. I will give anybody information about running for any office, as somebody that's an elected official. But the expectation is, it's just like, everybody's on the ballot, and you vote for whoever you're voting for. Plain and simple. But yeah, this whole equity thing, I'm old enough to know that that doesn't exist. Sorry, it doesn't. And I'll be back up with Walt for a second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. May I get a motion to accept education item one through ten?
Motion.
Motion, um, second.
It's been properly moved in second. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for item B, new business finance, items one through six?
I shall move.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to accept C, H, human resources, items one through twenty-two?
I shall move.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for item D, policy?
Motion.
Wait, and we have, um-
When she says on a question, that's when we have discussion. Excuse me. We are right now at a motion, there's a motion on the floor, for item D, policy. We have a motion, we need a second. It has been properly moved in second. Are there any questions? Ms. Woodfolk? Can we have a roll call vote?
Yes.
Fine.
Yes, and I also would like to have a discussion, because Ms. Woodfolk did ask for additional discussion, and I do have some points of clarity I'd like to bring up.
Okay, so at this point of discussion, Ms. McGowan, your hand was up. Okay, Ms. Perry, you may have the floor.
So, couple points of clarity. When the board was all white men, they were Republicans. The board is now a majority Democrats, and we were not here. These board members were not here, we were not a part of that not being equal. And if I was, I would have stood up for equality at that time. Now, to share some population information, councilmen from Collingdale did share the numbers. Darby Township is the largest municipality in the district. Collingdale's right behind them. We're huge. We don't need this. We can win, we have plenty of voters. We are the biggest municipalities. Folcroft is small, and Sharon Hill is the tiniest. Now, since equality did come up, I did also wanted to share. When it comes to Darby Township's population, one-third of their population lives on the South Side. Two-thirds of their population lives in what some people call Briar Cliff, I call it the North Side. Also, when it comes to populations of, I didn't get all the people of color, because the largest race, the largest races in our communities are black and white. So I did want to share some information. Folcroft is forty-three percent black residents. Darby Township is forty-four percent black residents. Collingdale is fifty-nine percent black residents. Sharon Hill, the smallest community with the smallest population, is seventy-two percent black residents. This initiative will protect Folcroft and Sharon Hill, our two smallest communities. And Sharon Hill being the pop, the highest percentage of population of people of color. This will create more equity. And furthermore, I did pass out to the board benefits of moving to voting by region. I don't have to read them all, there are copies on the table out there if anybody wanted to see them. But I did want to share, in Delaware County, there are multiple other districts who elect by region to make sure that every community is represented. And they are Chichester, some of our neighbors, Inner Borough in William Penn, Springfield, Wallingford, Swarthmore, and lastly, Westchester, and I know you don't think that's in our county, but a small piece of Westchester is. Thornbury Township is in Delaware County. So, to be fair, this is about equal representation. Darby Township, the North Side is not represented at all on this board. So if you live in what they call Briar Cliff, you do not have representation on this board. If you live in Folcroft, you do not have representation on this board. And Sharon Hill being the smallest, if you check the history of who has been elected by Sharon Hill, or for Sharon Hill, you will find, they were endorsed by the largest Democratic Committees from Darby Township and Collingdale. Sharon Hill wins elections because the Darby Township Democrats endorse them. Now, if you are a small community, so Folcroft, for example, if they do not get an endorsement from Collingdale or Darby Township, it is very, very difficult to win. The campaign is very, very expensive, and then they lose. The last time someone from Folcroft was elected was, I believe, when Ms. Teresa Harris Johnson was first elected. I believe the woman's name was Sharon Wilson, and I think it was two thousand and eleven. And if you couldn't hear me, because unfortunately, I'm very, I'm recovering from surgery and I was on a laptop last week, when we had two vacancies on the board, only half of the people who applied for those vacancies gave us an address. But out of the people who did give us addresses, seven people from Folcroft applied, and we appointed one. So there is interest in Folcroft, they just cannot win elections. And to be fair to the, the North Side of Darby Township, why aren't the Darby Township Democrats pulling people from the North Side? Now, what has happened in the past, I know is not fair. I didn't even live here, I didn't move here till two thousand and eight. And historically, Darby Township until probably the nineteen nineties was racially segregated. They have been treated unfairly. But right now, not only do they hold five out of the nine seats, they also hold the president's seat and the vice president's seat. So just know, if you don't live in the South Side of Darby Township, your voice on this board does not matter.
So, one, one- One, one, one minute, one-
Got it.
Wait, so, what we're gonna say is, you can't speak for every board member on the board?
I meant the public. Their voices are not heard.
So, you can't speak for all the public, because I'm the only Republican on the board? And I-
What about party?
Excuse me, I was speaking. I was the only Republican on the board, and it was the North Side who backed me. And I'm telling you about the Republicans from the North Side who pushed for me to stay on the board. So when you say that the North Side is not being represented, you can't say that. So I want you to be very clear about that. I'm the only Republican on this board, and they backed me. So, once again, I understand your point. I wouldn't have had a problem with this agenda item had I not been blindsided and had been brought to straight to a meeting instead of the whole entire board, so we can have a discussion. So the meeting you saw last Thursday was the first time the board members actually saw it. So that's why you had the kind of back and forth heated discussions, is because it wasn't brought to the board as a whole, it was brought to the committee of the whole. So let's put that, make sure we're putting all the facts out on the table when it comes to Southeast Delco Board at this point. And secondly, there has been individuals trying to get Folcroft people from the Democratic Party onto the board. Unfortunately, they don't fill out the paperwork. I've even walked people's paperwork around to other Democrats so they can get signed up. So even though I'm not out here saying that to the whole entire public, which is not anyone's business if someone wants to run from Folcroft, Darby Township, Sharon Hill, or Collingdale, because when I make a slate, I slate for everybody, whether you're Democratic or Republican. So I understand your point that you made with all the facts, but I just want to make sure that we're very clear when it comes to Darby Township. It's been divided, that's why we have all these barrels in between each other. If we want to get ruled down to the facts, Darby Township was the largest municipality since the eighteen hundreds. And then the barrels started breaking off at municipalities. So if you would like to research that fact, you can go to the Swarthmore College in the historical apartment in the archives and see that Darby Township started all the way past Thornberry Township, all the way to Philadelphia, where the projects of Pasco are and Bartra Gardens are. So let's be very clear, when we state facts, we're stating all the facts. At this time, Ms. McGowan, you have the floor.
I want to say, I- Hello? I want to say that when it comes down to questions of representation, my view on this is, when we discuss taxes, when we're voting on raising taxes, there should be an equal voice from each of the municipalities on how your taxes are being affected. If there's no representation from Folcroft, if there's no representation from Sharon Hill or even Darby Township, how are you going to have a discussion about something that's going to affect that person's taxes without a representative from that community? You can't turn around and go, "By the way, Folcroft pay more." When you, the person from, no one from Folcroft even got a chance to say yes or no or question it. They need to be a part of the process. That is why equal representation across the communities will ensure that every municipality gets a say in what is going to directly affect them. It's not to say that we're discounting anyone's contributions across at large. And when it comes down to running, it is much easier to run against your own community than it is to run against the entire group. Because then it just becomes a massive popularity contest, as opposed to talking about the issues that affect directly in your community. If I am talking about Darby Township schools, there should be a Darby Township representative on that board pushing for those schools. But if there's, and it should be from both lower and, well, not lower, north and south Darby Township, there should be someone from Folcroft on the board talking about Delcroft. They need, we need people that are from that community, that are affected by the changes and things that are going on in that community to speak on the board. It isn't taking away anyone else's voice, it's giving additional voices. And to have such a passion disconnect from people wanting just to have equal representation seems a bit off to me, considering that we fought to have racial representation. We have achieved that. We fought to have gender representation. We have achieved that. Why would we ever fight equality and representation? This is something that is affecting all of us, and it isn't taking away anyone else's power. So if there are two representatives from each municipality and one at large, you're, you're being represented, represented properly. There is no one taking anyone else's power away, we're giving power. This is a good thing. This is a positive change, a positive change for community. And when it comes down to running, it is very daunting, knowing that you- And when it comes down to running, it is very daunting, knowing that you have to go up against a whole crew of people you don't know, who don't know you, who don't know your community, but they're the ones that are winning because they got the most votes, because they came from the right town. Instead of it being, the community, Darby, or Sharon Hill should be voting for Sharon Hill's representatives on the board. And when it comes down to finding representatives, if you can't find a candidate, then you go out as a board and find that representative. You nurture those relationships now to find those people. We have people that come up here religiously to comment at these meetings and who keep us honest. That should be the person that we're going to, to try to encourage to come to the board and join us. We shouldn't be sitting here fighting and saying, "Well, they don't want to join, you know why they don't want to join?" Who wants to join this? You see us fighting, you see us going at one another, you see us being disrespected constantly, who wants to sit here and join that? Nobody, nobody wants to sign up, this is, we don't get paid. This is an unpaid job. And it's something that you do because you're passionate about it. And instead of pushing people away, let's invite them in, let's nurture these relationships so that people are clamoring for it. People do want it, but they get completely defeated when they see what they're up against and they know they don't have a chance because they can't get the proper endorsement and they can't win this fight because it's a great big popularity contest. Let's take that out, this isn't high school anymore, let's make it fair for everyone.
Ms., uh, one second, Mr. Fowler, Ms. Harris Johnson, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, Madam President. First of all, let me correct. We had two from Folcroft that ran for four years that were voted in, it was Sharon Wilson and her father. He did not complete his four years because he passed away, but there was representation. Plus, we had two that were appointed from Folcroft for the time, they took care, did the time for those people who resigned before their four years was up. I am for representation from every municipality, I've always been there, but you cannot have people run who don't want to run. I had asked the Democratic representative in Folcroft myself, would he go out to his municipality during their meetings to see if he could get anyone or a group of people to run for election for our school board? When I saw him again, he said that he presented it to the meetings, but no one responded. There is no one on this board that has denied anyone from running, I don't care what municipality you're in. We're all on this board for one thing, for our children. If there is no representation from any municipality, we do not exclude that municipality or those children, nor the community from anything that's pertaining to our district. Whatever is done in one district and we agree to it, it is done in every district, every municipality. So for that to be said, that is incorrect. As far as the taxes are concerned, whether the budget is open and it is presented to the community to come up and to explain why the taxes should not be raised, every municipality has that responsibility or that time to come up and voice their opinion about the taxes. If you don't come up, we cannot control it. If you do not want to run on the board and if you cannot find anyone to run, that's not the board's responsibility. Now, we have more things in this district to be concerned about. As the January election, as you know, has just, was a couple of weeks ago, we got a Republican in there and his aim is to destroy the education of our people, which will affect all of your disabled, your disabilities, children in here, plus the budget and everything else in our schools. We don't know what they're going to do with the educational department as far under this new president, elect president that we're going to have. That's our concern, we have to be concerned about what we're going to do if that happens. And if that happens, we then cannot sit back and say, "Oh, we can't do anything because we don't have representation from a particular municipality." As a district, from the superintendent on down, from the president on down to every board member in here, our responsibility is for the school district, not the people in the district, I mean, leaving out a particular municipality or in the district. So please, I want you people to understand, in the future, this is something maybe we can address, but right now, there is more important things that we have to be concerned about than Folcroft. Welcome Folcroft if they want to come. We've got nine chairs here. You want to come, if you're elected? Sit down, we'll greet you and everything. As far as the personal events, the personal personalities and what you call on our board, it has been going on, I've been a member on this board for 13 years. I was a member on the board when the majority of them was your Republican white male. They fought then among themselves publicly and it has not changed. Whether you do it in private or if we do it here, it hasn't changed and it's not going to change. Because we all have different personalities on this board and we're going to voice them. We have some on this board who have their own private personal agendas, they want to put forth and forget about the rest of the board. Is that right? Is that right? But see, what, what is happening is some, people want to push something, so now, here comes everybody in the audience. When we have regular board meetings, ain't nobody here. But because some people want to push something for a personal agenda, they reach out to all of you and you all come in and comply. But you be this concerned about the district all year long, not just tonight or this one particular agenda item? I am so upset right now, and I know you can tell because I am angry, that we are getting to a point like this, when you have a Republican in office who wants to destroy everything that we've done. I'm not speaking, this is my personal opinion, ma'am.
Order, hello? Ma'am? Ms. Harris Johnson, give me a moment, please. Excuse me, I don't want to have to move anybody out of the meeting, because this is a public meeting, but if you would like to speak, you need to get a card, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Harris Johnson.
This is my personal opinion and this is how I feel, okay? And I'm speaking. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Like everyone said, I'm for equal representation for the board, but doesn't nobody come out and run for the board? When I ran for the board in 2019, I automatically got a seat because not enough people ran. I think it was like four seats open, four people ran. But y'all talk about equal, equality, but nobody run. That's all I got to say. Thank you, Madam President.
So, can I speak?
Yes, you have the floor, Ms. Barley.
Thank you. So I had an opposite experience than Mr. Fowler. So when I ran, the ballot was packed, there was 11 people on the ballot for these seats. So it was not an easy task for me to get elected. I did have to campaign in other municipalities other than my own. I had to ask for endorsements from Democratic committees, Darby Township being one of them. I had to ask for endorsement in Sharon Hill, as well as the other municipalities. So it is an extremely daunting task when you have to do that. So I did not have the same experience as you. And I know that you have said in the past that Folcroft has, I don't like to say that we can place a generalized blanket statement to say that people are not going to run. We don't know that. At the last vacancy, there were seven, the appointed vacancy, there were seven people that ran, that put their name in from Folcroft. That shows me that those people were interested then, and if they were interested then, perhaps they'll be interested in the next election. We don't know that. So, I don't want to throw a blanket statement down saying that people from Folcroft are not interested. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a, Ms. Perry?
If everyone else that wanted to be heard has already been heard, I do have some rebuttal comments.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Perry.
So, President, you stated that Darby Township was the largest, you are still the largest, you are. Also, you stated that the board was blind, blindsided by this agenda item. So to be fair, I'm the one that asked for this. I emailed the president, the vice president and the superintendent on November 3rd. Since I am not the president, it is not my responsibility and it's not, and it demeans the president if I disseminate information to the board. That is the board president's responsibility, so you've had this since November 3rd. The agenda for the committee of the whole was supplied to the board on November 12th. So even though the president did not inform them of my request, they did receive this agenda item two days before the committee of the whole meeting. Also, to the vice president's comments, she mentioned that no board member tells who can run and who cannot, it's not up to current board members to decide who can run and who cannot, it is up to the local Democratic and Republican committees. To Mr. Fowler's comments about he was able to get a seat because no one else ran, that was true for his first term. He is now on his second term and he is in, he's about to finish his second year of his second term, and he was one of those 11 that ran when Mrs. Barley ran. So his statement was true, because same for me, when I ran, there was no one running. But things have changed. And lastly, I do want to share that proper parliamentary procedure, the president only comments after every board member's been heard. Thank you.
You are correct. And so let me give you some more information. You sent an email on November 3rd, but you asked for that agenda item to be on the agenda, knowing that the board was not going to see or be able to discuss it as a whole until committee of the whole. So again, if we want to put facts out there, let's make sure we put all the facts out there. Any further discussion?
Yes, if we provide information to the board president to have it added as an agenda item, that's how it's supposed to be, to get this brought up to become a discussion.
Correct.
We can't just, as far as I'm aware, we're not allowed to simply go around and say, "By the way, here's what I want to do, I want to have this conversation," because once we do that, we are now talking outside of the sunshine law.
So, I'm sorry.
So if we're not only able to have those discussions outside of the sunshine law and these discussions have to be public, wouldn't providing that information to the board president prior to the meeting and having a copy of the agenda prior to the board meeting give you ample time to be aware that this item is going to be discussed prior to the board meeting? So it's no one is being blindsided by anything, it is clearly communicated to everyone and we can't have discussions outside of that. And when it comes to the comments regarding direct attacks towards our community, we can't do that. We cannot be rude and dismissive to our constituents. They are who elect us and I feel like we should be respectful of everyone, including the opinions we don't agree with. I may not necessarily agree with how someone says something or what they say, but I cannot turn around and start being rude to people simply because it's my opinion. That's not the proper way to handle yourself and that is exactly why we end up looking at the way that we do in front of the public. And to turn around and say that this is going to continue is exactly why nothing will change. Because if no one is willing to take accountability for their own self, I am a hot head. I used to be at these meetings going off at the podium, but I became a board member and realized I can't do that anymore, I can't act that way. I have an example to set for the people and I can't be the way I used to be, I have to conduct myself with decorum and I have to conduct myself with respect even for opinions I do not agree with. And it's because I have to be able to work with my colleagues going forward. I can't turn around and be completely vile and then expect that same person to the next day turn around and work with me cooperatively towards something beneficial for the district simply because they, they got mad about the way that I said something. We have to go beyond that. And when it comes down to how we're moving forward with this, I think we have to take a step back from the assumption that nobody will run. When it is a daunting task, yeah, people aren't going to necessarily want to run because what's the point? You know, you're going to lose, period. They don't want to do it. But if they know that there's a system in place, then that's what we need, then they're going to be ready to and able to come forward. When it comes down to not focusing on this because we have a Republican in the White House, one has nothing to do with the other. We have a Republican coming into the White House, we have to deal with it, we have to work around it, we have to keep moving on, but that doesn't stop everything else going on. We can talk about these things and work, we shouldn't be focused strictly on one thing and nothing else. We should still be able to work and multitask and do multiple things. We ask our students to do it every single day, they have more than one subject. We don't turn around and tell them, "You only focus on reading this week, you can't focus on anything else." No, we tell them, "You're going to focus on reading and math and English," there's multiple compartments and if you cannot do that as a board, then you are not effective. So being able to talk about this and discuss this, in addition to doing the work that we've already done within our agendas and the voting that we have gotten done, does not take one away from the other. In fact, it causes us to be more productive.
Is there any more comments? So we have a motion on the floor. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lafferty, I didn't see your hand.
It's an interesting discussion we're having here. I heard a lot of comments on both sides. I'm an avid believer in equal representation. My biggest part of it comes from taxation without representation. Has nothing to do with any person, individual. I ran from the smallest community. I was out on the basketball courts in Township in Collingdale. I worked, I worked hard to get this seat and I've worked with people very hard. Yes, I bet it, I would be the first one. I've had my clashes with people, but you know what, the next day, I'm actually sitting there trying to figure it out and trying to move on. I've actually come up with a solution and I don't even know if it's legal. Or I say put it on the ballot.
If the Election Bureau permitted this issue to be put on the ballot, it would not be legally binding, but it might give the board an opportunity to, for more information, but there's a process that has to be followed and the decision would be made by the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, not according to a ballot referendum.
May I offer additional comments to Mr. Lafferty's question?
Sure.
So Pennsylvania school code does allow a school district to ask the solicitors to submit the petition to the Court of Common Pleas in the county. That does take some time. And then after, if the county approves it, the county Court of Common Pleas will send it to the Department of State and we all know governments not fast. So yes, the solicitor is correct, but I just wanted you to understand, it's a very, it's not a very quick practice. It goes to the county Court of Common Pleas if they approve it and they don't have to. It would then go to the Department of State for approval before we could even put it into petition.
And then you also have the logistics, of course, of, you have board members who are now elected at large and when do the, when do the, if the regional district is approved as opposed to an at-large district, then what happens to the members of the board that are elected at large? Again, I don't have an answer to that question.
I've done that math.
I'm going to work through all of this.
I've done that math.
Well, I'm just saying, that's an issue that has to be resolved also.
Right, so.
So next year, there's me up... I'm up. I'm from Collingdale. There is also three members from Darby Township up that will leave. One Collingdale representative, two Darby Township representatives, and two Sharon Hill representatives. So because this process takes so long, it's not going to happen in the 2025 election. It will probably happen in the 2027 election. So two points of clarity. If next year, when the four seats are up, if one person from each municipality wins, no one's term will be cut short. And also, if I win an election next year for School Board, I volunteer to give my seat up early if Collingdale has too much representation. Thank you.
Mr. Diorio, can you do your research on the points that Ms. Perry just stated? I know you said you was, but I want to make sure that the constituents hear that.
Yes, of course. I mean, I'm going to... if this passes tonight, then I'll begin my research, not only as to the issues that will be looked upon perhaps by the Court of Common Pleas, but also what happens thereafter as far as if it's approved by the Court of Common Pleas, how this whole process is put into motion. So yes, of course, I'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. Diorio. Ms. McGowan?
Yeah, just one final comment. I wanted to apologize to the public and thank you guys for coming out tonight. I wanted to make sure that it is explicitly clear. There was no campaigning to have all of these people... we didn't contact all of these people.
Please allow Board members to speak. Ms. McGowan, I'm sorry.
There was no one contacting these people, and I'm sure pretty much everyone here, other than maybe a couple people, would be able to freely say they have never once been contacted by a member of this Board to come here for this meeting. These are constituents who saw the meeting, who heard the comments, and decided to come of their own accord to do this. And we welcome this kind of discourse, and we welcome this kind of attention. And whether or not someone comes out to a meeting strictly because of something that is on the agenda, that means that the agenda is working. It means that the meetings are working and that they are paying attention and coming. And to turn around and say that we are in any way influencing something like that is a bit insulting to the people of the Board without that kind of proof. And unless someone has actual proof that I have invited most of these members of this community here tonight, then I would say, please don't speak on any type of personal agenda without knowing for certain with absolute proof that this has actually occurred. These people are here of their own accord. Now, there's only one person here that I spoke to. One person. The rest of these people, I'm welcome, happy to see you here. Thank you for coming out, and I hope to see you again at another meeting, and I'm sure that they will be here if an agenda item pertains to something that they feel is important. And that is exactly why the public is invited to the meetings. So come out when you see fit. If you come to every meeting, great. If you don't come to every meeting, that's fine, too. Come to the meetings that absolutely concern you and matters that you want to discuss. You should not feel like you are not welcome to come at any time. I would like... excuse me, Madam President. I would just like to make a correction. I heard... I know it was on Facebook, and it was also during the meeting in Collingdale.
At this time, we have a motion on... we have a motion for D Policy 1. Oh, I'm sorry. We have another comment. Ms. Carter?
You have three minutes. Only because I actually didn't come to the meeting because of this conversation, but I'm glad that I am here. For many of you that don't know, my name is Sheila A. Carter, and I am a resident of Sharon Hill Borough, and I was born and raised in Darby Township, so I have been here all my life. I'm also a former School Board Director, six years. And a lot of what you guys are saying, some is true and some's not true. I remember as a School Board Director, when I came on, we were all Republican, okay? And Republican control, but Republicans controlled the county. So that's how the election went. Now we're more diverse, and in being diverse, you're going to have a lot of diversity. And it sounds to me, I hate to say this, but I stand before you as the President of the NAACP. You know, we're the largest civil rights organization in the whole country, and I see some issues with race right here within your Board, just sitting in the back of the room. I hear it. I hear people say, "Oh, we got more representation of Darby Township than we have Fallcroft than we have Collingdale." True. Best believe, the reason is people don't want to be School Board Directors. This is not a job that you're going to make money off of. What you're going to benefit from is you're helping all the children. These people here are not sitting here because they live in Darby Township, Fallcroft, or Collingdale. They're sitting here to provide services to every child that lives in our school district. So you keep saying there's this division. Yeah, there is a division of where we live at, but there's no division of the services that we're providing for all our children. So you need to get away from that. You're... "Oh, I'm Darby Township, so I can't help the kids in Sharon Hill." "Oh, I'm from Fallcroft. Oh, I can't help." No. We represent... and I say "we" because I pay taxes, so I'm a part of this whole community, you know? But you have to understand that, yes, I hear you. I hear you say, "Hey, we got X amount of people from Darby Township." That's not fair, because what's going to happen? They're going to develop a clique, and then that clique's going to be here, and that clique's going to be there, so we can't work together. So guess what? The people, the voters, we're not the issue. The issue is you. You have to work together to provide services for all of us. So don't be knocking on our door asking us, "Vote for me because I live in Sharon Hill." But no, I'm going to vote for you because you care about all of us. I don't see a problem with you guys, what you're doing right now. Keep doing what you're doing, okay? And yes, trust and believe, Ms. Johnson, we're going to have some problems because, yes, they are trying to dismantle the Department of Education. That's what we need to be worried about right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. So we have a motion on the floor for New Business Policy Item 1. Ms. Woodfolk asked for a roll call vote. Mr. Butler, may I have a roll call vote, please? Oh, I'm sorry. No. It was not seconded. You seconded Franchis... Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded? Okay, thank you. So can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, you may, Madam President. Mr. Fowler?
No.
Mrs. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Womack?
No.
Ms. Woodfolk?
No.
Mrs. Barley?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty?
I don't know.
No.
No.
Ms. Harris Johnson?
No.
Ms. Monroe Witter?
No.
The motion passes as...
Motion fails.
Two, three. I'm sorry. Motion fails.
So the motion fails. Thank you. Ms. Perry, you have the floor.
So I just want to make it clear to the public that the School Board does not have to pass this. Pennsylvania's school code does allow the same petition to be filed by the voters. So I just did it to try to do the right thing. So if you're interested in knowing how to file that petition, you still have a right as voters to do it, and if the county and the state approve it, the School Board has to enforce it. And also, next year, if you're considering running, please, please take it seriously and please run.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And so it'll be my initiative to, at the next Board meeting, to have literature here for anyone who would like to run for the Board. You will have your representatives that you can talk to, to your party, whatever party you are. So I'll have that at the next Board meeting in December. There are no property items. County Committee, Community Reports. Mr. Lafferty, do you have a DCC report?
Yes, I do, ma'am.
Thank you.
On Wednesday, December 4th... on Wednesday, December 4th, there'll be a virtual high school boom enrollment seminar. They're going to have adult learning. There's supposed to be 40 million people that have college credits that aren't doing them. DCC will have a partnership.
Mr. Lafferty, what was that, adult learning? What day is that?
The adult learning is the fifth...
The 5th of December? Thank you.
Re-up education.
At this time, I do not have a DCIU report. Legislative Council PSBA, Mr. Fowler, do you have a report? Thank you. Parents/Student Advisory, Ms. Harris Johnson and Ms. Woodfolk?
Yes, Madam President. We will... we're going to schedule a meeting in December with the family and community engagement specialists. And we will discuss the agenda and everything that we're going to have in our meeting after the holidays. Because the holidays are here, we're not going to schedule any type of Parents/Student Advisory Committee meeting. And we will let you know when that meeting will occur in the year 2025. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Dr. Dior... Mr. Diorio, do you have a Solicitor's Report?
Not this evening, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sanchez, do you have an Administrative Team Update Report? Dr. Sanchez, are there any comments concerning non-agenda items?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to invite Walt Reeler... Walt Reeler to the mic, please.
Good evening. My name is Walter Reeler. I'm presently the President of Parks and Rec for Darby Township. Last year, we were granted access to Darby Township School. You know, I'd like to thank you for that. So we tried to reapply again this year. Started the process again in August. Mr. Kevin Curry is the person I spoke to. Helpful at times, not so helpful lately. Trying to find out what your actual procedure is as far as facilities usage. We're an in-house organization, looking to make use of a school in-house, actually right across the street from our municipal building, Darby Township School. We understand that there is an organization who is not a part of the school district, actually resides in Marple, that is quote-unquote grandfathered in. How is it an organization that isn't in our district takes precedence over someone in-house? We're trying to make use for our residents, our kids, only to hear that an outside organization takes precedence first. So could someone please get back to me? Shayla Johnson was supposed to respond. I have not heard from her either. Kevin Curry has actually stopped communicating with me as far as last week, once I brought his attention, that I understand in-use takes precedence, in-house takes precedence over out-house. So could someone please let me know the proper procedure? We've submitted insurance, our insurance information and everything. I'd like a response. No, like tonight.
No, sorry. Can't answer you tonight, but I promise that I'm going to be in touch with you tomorrow. I need to do the research.
Is that a legit response? Because I'm not hearing from people. I keep hearing I'm going to hear, and no one's getting back to me.
I am letting you know that I will be in touch with you tomorrow.
Thank you.
I was here for moral support. I'm here as the Commissioner at Darby Township. So when he brings it to me, I'm going to come here and support him because it supports Darby Township. We're one of the schools in the district that make up Southeast Delco School District. I know normally the channels that you go through, or I'm not sure what the proper channels are either, as to what you go through. I know there's a facilities meeting, and I know that it is hard as bleep to try to get some space in any of these schools.
We're not asking for the high school, because we understand everyone wants the high school.
Right. Not AP. AP is out. We know that Academy Park is hopping and busy, so we're not worried about that, but...
So as I am committing to making sure that I'm giving you a call tomorrow, please know that we have a PDE grant that makes the gyms off limits after a certain time, because by the grant stipulations, we need to run activities there. Let me research what that is. I believe I spoke to someone earlier today that I asked for the very same information, if I can be given the days and the times that you need, so I can figure it out.
Awesome. Thank you.
Denise Spencer? Hello, everyone. Good evening. Hope you're all having a wonderful night. Well... let me see if I can get this together. So my name is Denise Spencer, and I'm here on behalf of my child, Caleb Spencer. I was here before for the gifted program. I was here before talking to you guys on the 24th, and it's the 22nd of this month, and I've not spoken with anyone as yet. And I was contacted on the 6th, and it was not a good contact. And for the person who contacted me, I'm going to say it was very unprofessional, talking to me over the... shouting whatever you wanted to say to me to the other person. It was very unprofessional. And I can see maybe where it's coming from based upon everything else that has happened in the past week. So for the gifted program, I want to say also, yes, I'm here. I'm not here all the time, and I'm here to advocate for my child. And you're all up there because of the... supposedly because of the children. And I know everyone up there is not getting paid, but some of you are. Okay? So now that we have that out the way, now on your Southeast Delco, Chapter 16, I'd like to present back what you guys put out to the public, because if you're saying this to us, to everyone, then it's on paper and it's on record, and I would just want to regurgitate what you say in your documents. Okay? So, Chapter 16. The code specifies how Pennsylvania will meet the obligation to suspect suspected and identify gifted students. I can't go through all of this because I only maybe have four minutes. Right? So it says gifted students who require gifted education and reach their... to reach their potential. My child is not reaching his potential. On the 24th, when I tried to talk to everyone, everyone said they weren't involved in what has happened to that program. And everybody forwarded me to Dr. Sanchez, saying that he was the one who had this done to the children, and it's not right. Okay? Dr. Sanchez said he would have a meeting with me in person. Okay? That has not happened. I was contacted by a lady. I don't remember her name right now. I just want to go forward so I can reach my point. So... we already discussed it about the gifted program, that it's identify gifted students. My son and a bunch of other students in this district is gifted, and I'm very disappointed that we put our focus to some things that is not even relevant. But the children who are relevant in terms of being the ones who may become the future... the future representation of us or what we have in technology and in housing and whatever for the future is the ones that we're turning our backs on. Right? My child came to me. I said to him, "Is your classes for gifted continuing?" He said, "Yes, he's having something done, but what he's been done right now with him is ridiculous." And I'm going to use that word, ridiculous. It's ridiculous. Why is he making bridge out of... what is it? Popsicle stick? Is it an art class? It's not an art class. Let me go further, because you see, this... as a parent, this is just mind-boggling. This is just mind-boggling that supposedly educated people who have children, who are in the position, who are here to assist, and this is... who are in the position, who are here to assist, and this is your dream, and this is your aspiration, that this is going on, right? Now, let me see if I have the right paper here.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time is up. Dr. Sanchez, can you please personally, um?
My time is up, but I just want to say this before I go down. It needs to be fixed, and not just some put-together thing. It need to be fixed, and the children need to get the right thing that they need to excel, okay? And this is something important. I don't want to hear about anything else. I need to hear something about this, or I'm going to start turning, I need to turn over some stones, I need to get, you guys need, you need to be responsible for your actions, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Shayla Carter?
Sheila.
Shayla Carter?
Give me a minute, everyone, sorry, give me one second. I need to put my reader glasses on, so I can see. Uh, once again, my name is Sheila Carter, President. Now, I will say, I did come here today to, um, speak as, um, President of the NAACP. And, um, I want to say that one of the reasons I was here, because I was contacted by some parents of the special education's concerns in the district, um, similar to what the, um, parents just spoke of. So it seems as though, um, from what, well, first of all, hold on, give me one second. Um, it seems as though there has been some conversation with, um, hours being, um, uh, short, the day being shortened for the special ed students, okay? And the parents just feel as though, um, one hour versus, and this is not the exact amount, let's say six hours, how do you, um, justify reducing those hours? And the question is, um, this would have been a nice type of setting to have with the parents or other stakeholders in the district, because I honestly believe we don't have to have children in our district to care about our special ed or our gifted children. So I think, I don't know if that conversation took part, but it seems as though you do have some parents in your district that have some great concerns, and if parents have concerns, we should get back to them. It shouldn't be a matter of two weeks or a week, you saying, hey, I'm going to call you, and then you don't call people, because that's not fair, okay? As someone just stated, we have some paid employees and we have some great volunteers. But if you say you're going to do something, we need to move forward and do it. Um, one of the things, uh, give me a second, guys, I know I'm still on my minutes. Give me a second, cause I, um, one of the things that I want to say is this. Um, I don't know if, um, possible if I could get information of how many gifted students we have in our district, and also, um, if what their concerns are have already been addressed. Um, I would like to find out that information. I don't know if you can give it to me now, or you can forward it to me. You know, I know it's the holidays, so I'm not going to bother anybody, it could be after the holidays. But if I could, um, capture how many gifted students we have, what the program actually looks like today, um, versus, um, what you were attempting to do by re- you know, releasing some of those hours, that would be great. Um, so that gives me an opportunity to have facts instead of just assuming things. Um, one of the things I know through the NAACP, people will call you in a crisis. And it's like, do it now, this happened to happen, and then when you research, it's totally different. Well, I'm going to say I prefer the research than accuse you guys of anything at this time. Um, so with that said, is it possible that I can obtain some of that information? Because, um, we do know that, um, mandated by state law, we have to have, um, services for our gifted children. And these could be our future presidents and scientists, and you, we don't know, but it would be great if they came from Southeast Delco, I can tell you that. Thank you.
Ms. Carter.
I'm sorry. Oh, honey.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carter. Ms. Manson?
Hi. Latonya Manson, do I need, that's it, okay. So first, let me bring some sunshine and some good news, instead of some bickering. So the cheerleaders, thanks to the school board, and Dr. Sanchez, they went to the Navy Federal half, and did the Navy halftime extravaganza this last Saturday. They had a ball. We were on Sterling Coach Bus, four o'clock in the morning, they picked us up out front. The bus was great. They had wifi, they had a bathroom, they had charging areas. Um, it was comfortable, the seats went back. Our driver, Valentino, was the bomb. When I say the bomb, he was the bomb. He was, he stayed with us the whole time, whenever I called, he was right there to pick us up. The girls were a part of at least, I want to say it was about fifty cheerleading teams there, because there were also elementary teams. I sent you all, um, videos and pictures of us when we went, um, also if you go on my page on Facebook, then you'll also see it. Um, it was, it was excellent, it was fun, the girls had a great experience, and we want to thank you all. Um, I have one of my cheerleaders right here, Montana, she was there with us. Um, Montana, did you have fun? They were really in awe, especially when they walked in. We're used to maybe fifty, the sixty fans, and they walked into about fifteen thousand fans. So it was like, Coco, what is this? But they did an excellent job, they, they really had fun, so we do appreciate that. That was one thing, so I do appreciate that. Second, I wasn't able to get in, you know, I, I come to the school board meetings all the time, you know, I, I'm, me and, um, Mr. Butler, we always go ham about taxes, because I'm always fussing about taxes. Cause it don't matter to me where we live at, the taxes go up, it just don't even matter. Um, but I do want to speak on this real quick, because I was taking notes, because I wasn't able to talk to y'all, talk when y'all was just talking. Y'all, um, we, y'all were up here talking about, um, equality and representation from each area for the schools and everything. Um, before y'all go on there, get this middle school back. Before y'all start talking about two from Fall Creek, two from Sharon Hill, two from Colindale, two from Darby. It needs to be a middle school, a middle school. Stop with this seventh and eighth grade in these other schools, because that is where our problems are, that's why we have problems in the high school. Because they don't come together, they're separated, segregated, however you want to put it, in these different schools. So they don't know each other. And then when they come here to the high school, the high school fighting, they got to fight every day, every single day. I know, because my, my cheerleaders is texting me, they calling me, they telling me everything that's going on. So I need, before we start with everything else, y'all better vote on the middle school and find it. Take them, them kindergarten kids and put them back in them regular schools, because that's where I went, Sharon Hill, K through six, and then we went to Darby Township, which was called Ashland, and that's where we all got together. That's where the fights might have happened, but by the time we got to the high school, we were, we knew everybody.
Ms. Manson?
Yes.
Your three minutes is up.
Okay, but now, my three minutes is up, let me say this while I'm walking. No, this one is important, because this is, I'm, I'm not playing about this one. Friday or Thursday night, one of my former cheerleaders was murdered. And Saturday, the cheerleaders here are doing a balloon release at the football field at four o'clock. So it would be nice if you could come out, or, you know, anything that you would like to do. Her funeral is on November thirtieth, I don't have the time just yet, however, um.
Can you get that to Dr. Sanchez, please?
Yes.
When he receive it.
Oh, the data, the, the time? Yes, okay. So Saturday is just the, the balloon release, it'll be here at the football field at four o'clock, um.
Yeah, that's about it. Yes, this is it right here, I don't need one.
No, the time.
Oh, okay.
Can you forward it?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So the service is on, um, it's in Darby on Ridge Avenue, I am going to forward it to Dr. Sanchez. The viewing is from nine to eleven, and the service is at eleven AM. Um, but her balloon re- bu- her balloon release is this Saturday at four PM at the football field.
Ms. Manson, can I just say thank you so much for the pictures, they were really, really cute. Thank you for sending them.
Lisa Small?
Coming to the mic with a smile on my face, and I apologize for speaking out of turn. Um, but I do want to say this, that in order to promote unity, um, I, I am a Republican, but I have a lot of friends that are Democrats, and we don't, we don't have any problems. We don't agree on everything, but we don't have, um, animosity. And, and I do take, um, offense to what you said, not for me, but for the children, the students that are here. And it doesn't promote unity among the school board, it doesn't promote unity with the community. So our president-elect is our president-elect. If it was another president that was a Democrat, and you're a Republican saying that, I would come up here and say the same thing as a Republican, just because it's just not the way we should be. So whether we like the politics or not, we really do need to unite. Because this is a school board, like everybody's saying, it's a school board, you represent every community, all the students, no matter where they're from. And it doesn't matter who's the president, or who's a Republican, or who's a Democrat. I ran for school board in the nineties. I did my time, I did a lot, I was here all the time, not here, here, we had meetings elsewhere. But I know what it's like. I, we didn't win, I was a Republican, I turned to the Democrats because the Demo- the Republicans wouldn't run us, they already had their people. The Democrats are huge, and they were back in the nineties too, and they ran us. And that was at the beginning when the Democrats start, started, um, coming up. But we didn't win, we made headway. Um, so I'm not a big staunch Republican and everything Republican. I look at the person and what they, what they believe in. So that's what I, that's just the, what I want to get across. And you know what, back, way back then in the nineties and prior, the school board meetings were very contentious too. There was a lot of bickering, there was a lot of anger. And one thing that you could do, starting right now, is change that. You can change that and make a decision right now, not to continue on in that same pattern. We don't have to live the way we lived one second ago, the next minute. And especially for the kids here, the students here, and the students of the school. It's so important that we have an example for them, and that we be the, that example, so thank you.
Thank you. Like to invite Stefan?
Uh, thanks for allowing me to speak again. Um, coming on behalf of President of the Colonial Athletic Club, uh, we seeked a permit for Harris School. We have over a hundred and forty-four, uh, kids ready to play basketball, and that permit has not been approved yet. So I'm seeking information on when will that be approved, we're usually already in the gym by now. So, uh, I know you might not have the information handy here, but I'm looking to see if you guys could look into that tomorrow for us, to get moving for us at this point.
So I will commit to personally following up with you as well. Um, but I also want to re- reiterate, we have a state grant that requires our gyms to be used by our kids, so in that program, starting at a certain time. That's probably the reason why that was put on pause, but I need to get back to you. And maybe we can figure out how either your time shift, but our grant was written to PDE, and it requires us to use the facilities as written. So I will personally look into it and follow up.
So you're seeing Harris?
Yes, Harris Gym.
What time and what days?
Uh, I have my commissioner here, if I may, uh, Leanne, uh, if she could just interject for me and answer those questions.
Follow up tomorrow, there is no number here, so I'll follow up with you once the meeting is done.
No problem, yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, I may have heard.
Maria Jenkins?
So, um, just real quick, it looks like the parents that I wanted to target are going, Maria Jenkins from Darby Township, um, Glen Olden. Um, parents, advocate for your children. I see a lot of people pointing their finger at the board, do your research. If this school district is failing you, this school district is responsible for seeing that your child is educated outside of this district. All I'm going to say is do your research. Do not sit up here and aggravate yourself it, and allow or think that, oh, these people are the end-all be-all. All I'm going to say is do your research. If your home school district is, you feel as though they're failing your children, that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Announcements of the future, uh, meetings. Our organization meeting will be Monday, December second, twenty twenty-four, at six PM, back at Academy Park. And the Board of Business meeting will be Thursday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at seven PM, at Academy Park. Excuse me, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. The meeting is adjourned. Have a safe, wonderful, oh, can we have one minute, please? I am so sorry. I would like to have a motion, a motion, a moment of silence for one of our students. Am I seeing her name, is it Tiana? Tanaya Bell. Thank you. Please get home safely and have a happy Thanksgiving, if you celebrate it.